Planning Board meeting. We will get started on item number one, which is approval of minutes from the March 11th Planning Board meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I think it was Tom and Tom. And then, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Item number two, disclosure of conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict on any of the votes that we're going to take tonight?
I do. It's a continuing conflict with the project on College Avenue, ProSeal.
Item number three. RTG Enterprises LLC is requesting a revision to Section 5.14B of the zoning ordinance to allow for truck parking facilities in Airport Industrial. Does anybody hear from there?
Yes, hi. Steve Baldwin and Andrea is here as well.
Hello.
Hello.
Would you like to give us an overview of your project?
So, we have two acres over at 75 Airport Road, and we've been working with Truck Parking Club and the landowner there to put a truck parking facility there. So, we've been working with local contractors and getting quotes. There's a huge need for semi-trucks to have safe overnight stays, and being so close to the highway, there's not really any good options anywhere. So, just, we've been, you know, just putting together plans and seeing if we can get the approval to have this facility put together.
Any questions?
What do you mean by safe overnight? Is it, is it just the truck that's secure? Are there drivers there, or?
Yep. It's, it's, drivers, they all sleep in their cabs. You know, when I say safe, you know, we're looking to have kind of a gated area with a fence at the entrance. And, you know, there's, there's just been a lot of problems with truckers that sleep, you know, sometimes they're forced to sleep on the side, like an off-ramp, or at a huge travel plaza, and, you know, his stuff gets stolen from them, and I've heard all kinds of different stories. So, it's one of those things where, you know, if we can provide them some safe, you know, private parking, it's beneficial for everyone.
Will, will this facility have access to a porta potty or something like that?
Yep. That's the plan. We would have porta potties or a trailer on site.
So, you're not planning on doing like permanent facility, bathroom facilities or anything?
Correct. We are not.
Is this city-owned property? Is it, is this property owned by the city?
No, they own the property.
But did they get it from the city?
The city sold it to maybe one or two people before they.
Okay.
Your microphone.
All right. I just want to disclose that I, prior to the city, I was a prior owner.
Okay. But you don't have a.
No, I just want to disclose that.
Did you, did you have your site planned there? Can you pull up your site?
Pull up your site plan.
I have it on my thumb drive, but it's going to take me some effort to pull it up.
I can, I can pull it up, absolutely. One second.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
While you're doing that, a couple quick, I'm interested in this. So, there's an app, the trucks will see how many, so you're going to have some way of keeping track of how many spaces are available at any given point in time, and then they'll have some kind of coded access to the gate, and that's all done automatically?
Yep.
That's correct.
Yep. There's an app called Truck Parking Club, and they've been getting a lot of momentum. They have about 1,750 sites nationwide. So, it's kind of an Airbnb where people can go on there and, you know, and try to find the location where they're headed to, and book through the app, and, you know, there's reviews and pictures and directions on how to park and everything like that. It's pretty, pretty organized. And, and I'm sorry, I'm not able to share. It says the host isn't allowing multiple presenter sharing for this meeting.
I can do it. Just, Chad, I can do it.
So, I don't know if I can get permission just this once.
Anne, I have a question. I'm looking through the, the documents that were out in the shared space. Do we have the, like, the proposed zoning ordinance for 514B of what it would say?
I believe that's there. If not, it's just adding that truck, truck parking facilities.
So, it would be like a number seven?
Yeah. I thought I did put that out there, but maybe not. So, yeah, he said, yeah, put the resolution out there. It would be the language in the resolution. So, in the Airport Industrial Park, we don't have anything called truck parking facilities. And initially, the park was to create, was created.
It should be written this year.
With the intention that we would attempt to bring in businesses that would hire many employees.
Yep.
And it hasn't worked out that way, so.
While they're working on that, another quick question. How many trucks are you going to max out with?
That's, that's in the, that's on the site plan?
That, that site plan is not accurate. You can't get that many trucks on that space.
We'd like to say, think that it's about 35, you know, 70-foot trucks, knowing that we would probably not reach 50% capacity. A lot of the trucks, what I'm being told by Truck Parking Club, is that the, a lot of the trucks are monthly stays. So, it could be someone who lives nearby and just needs a place to park their, you know, just their cab, and they pay by the month. So, looking for that balance between the monthlies and the daily stays, so, but, let's see, if I could share.
It, yeah. I don't know. It's not going to let us share.
Yeah. The host, the host isn't in the meeting.
Yep.
Okay. So.
So, the board has, has seen your plan. I emailed it to them, and it's out on their shared space.
Okay.
We didn't have any way to show the public.
I thought you had a thumb drive.
No. It's in there. If you can find, if you can handle that.
Down at the bottom, right there, Sam.
This is why we.
Problem is, is even we can't share.
Oh, yeah, I can share.
Yeah. Nobody can share on the Zoom because the host doesn't.
This is why we don't.
Yeah, that's why we don't. Sorry, we're just having technical problems.
There it is.
I was holding it up.
Oh. That, he has it on his computer there.
I can walk up to the camera.
Well, just for everybody's information who hasn't seen that, they have approximately 6.9 acres, but they're only going to be using the two acres right along Airport Road. That, that is filled area, and there's a significant, significant amount of wetland in the, in the rear part of the lot, and also it drops down below the filled area. So, I, because I held it up, would anybody be able to see it? Chad?
Looks good.
There we go.
So, just that gray area, if you can see the gray area, that's where the trucks will be.
I quickly counted 85. There's a response.
That was, that was a previous plan. We'd submitted the revision that Anne was just holding up with.
Got it.
30, 32, 35 trucks on there. And I, logistically, we're kind of looking at, you know, how someone could back into a space, how much they, they say they need about another 75 feet to back into a space. So, it's getting pretty tight. The shape doesn't help, how it kind of gets narrow at the end. But like I said, I'm not seeing that we would really get up to 50% occupancy with, with dailies, and, you know, the, the full-time renters would probably take kind of the spaces towards the back, just to keep it easy for the daily renters.
Steve, is this strictly like long-haul 18-wheel truckers, or does this also include like campers or other larger vehicles?
Yeah. Good question. Typically, you know, from what I'm, what I'm being told, it's mostly the semi-trucks that stay here. They do have some overnight stays, but it's not really, you know, RV-friendly. So, it's mostly kind of word of mouth on that Truck Parking Club. Actually, was at dinner with the founder and another gentleman last night, and they, they told me that they would like to open it to RVs and just, you know, people that are like passing through and sleeping in their vehicle, but that's not really, you know, target demographic for them right now.
Thank, thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there any other sites like this in the state currently?
Three other sites.
Three. Do you know offhand where those are?
They're, Andrea, Preska Isle.
Preska Isle. There's one just outside of Portland. And what was the third one?
It was, the third one was pretty far north, and none of them are off of I-95 either, but they're really small. What, they have maybe five spots, and their bookings throughout the state are pretty low. But, you know, it comes down to which highway you're off of and the traffic count. So, right now, we, just some fun facts, there's about 1,600 semi-trucks that pass this exit every day. So, you know, we, we estimate that if we can get 1% to stop by, that might be 16 trucks an evening. So, just, again, right about half, and we're playing it conservative, thinking that we're not even going to make it that far.
So, is the surface going to be asphalt or some other kind of improved surface, or?
The, this, yes. So, good question. We, we looked at bringing in gravel, so we would have to have a really thick base of heavy gravel, and then, so it would be impervious, everything. We would have it leveled out and then bring in gravel, just, you know, pack it down.
Stuben, or Stuben, that's the third location in Maine.
Hi. My name's Randy Marshall. I'm the airport manager, so we're looking forward to having another neighbor, so that'll be exciting. One question on the type of use concerning the airport. We're always concerned with wildlife. Is there going to be any provision to prohibit, let's say, a waste disposal vehicle or one of the 18-wheelers that's hauling waste up to one of the landfills, you know, so that they can't park in that facility, which would attract wildlife and be probably discourage other people from parking, but just, just a question.
You know, I'm not really sure. So, you're, you're saying specifically like a dump, a dump trailer moving, moving waste from a landfill or to a landfill?
Correct.
You know, I'm not really sure what the regulations are around that. Typically, from what I've seen, you know, in a semi-truck, those, those dumpsters are, they're, they're not going long hauls, but the semi-trucks are usually shipping cargo, so, and that's just, you know, my perspective, but, you know, if that's something of concern, we could definitely do some digging into it to see if that would be a nuisance.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
How tall are your fences?
We're just going to do the standard six-foot height.
And your gate is, I'm assuming, open enough that an animal could pass in or out of that?
Yes. Yeah. And the fence doesn't run all the way around the property, it's just kind of more of like a signage point there. We try to keep more of a natural, like, green barrier, if possible.
Any other questions? Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to review the zoning ordinance. Anne, do you have any language around that, or is it just to add?
Just, that would be adding item number seven to the permitted uses.
Okay.
It would just be truck parking facilities.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And then, I assume they have to come back for site plan review, Anne?
So, just, just to refresh your memory on the process, the planning board just voted to recommend this zoning change to the planning board?
To the council.
I'm sorry, to the city council, and the council will have to vote twice, once at each of two meetings, and then you'll have to bring this back, your, your site plan back to the planning board for site plan review.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we know when it'll be on the council agenda? Probably not next two weeks.
Let's see, when is the next council? I'll try to get it on the next council meeting, if I can.
The next meeting is a week from today.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So, there's a dead, I should be able to get it on to the next council agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you, well, we can talk about that tomorrow. I could.
Okay.
If you're available and.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that was three and four. So, item number five. City council is requesting planning board recommendation regarding rezoning from general industrial to residential B on seven properties located along the westerly side of Drummond Avenue. Hello, Jeff?
Good evening. I'll be quick tonight. There. Good evening. Jeff Allen from A. Hudson. I spoke with Mrs. Beveridge about this earlier. I have a client that is buying Lot 9 on map eight, and once, it's currently zoned industrial, all of these properties, and my client wanted to put some residences in there, so we need to have it, he was proposing to have it rezoned to residential B. When I spoke to Mrs. Beveridge about it, there's some of the neighbors that also were interested in getting their property rezoned from industrial to B, and so, I think, Mrs. Beveridge went ahead with the idea of doing, I think there are seven, total of seven properties along there.
Okay.
So, the Lot 9 that I'm working with the gentleman on, we're just rezoning a portion of it. The total property is about 13 acres, and I'm asking for about nine acres to be rezoned to residential B. We went to the city council with this a couple of weeks ago, and they, of course, referred it to you, so I think we're looking forward for a referral back to the council.
I've got a question. I ride my bike back along that road a lot, and those lots are often underwater. It's very low area back through there. So, is that, do we have to worry about that when we try to amend a zoning?
It depends on the use. A lot of times with the, an industrial use would usually require a larger impervious area, larger paved area, and whereas a home might not. The lot I'm on is a total of around 13 acres, and we're just looking at using the sliver of that road because there's a, a stream that comes down in the back of this and curves around. We're using between Drummond Avenue and that stream as, as. as the residential development my client's looking at. We have gone and have, are getting the wetlands evaluated there. So obviously, we can avoid those. But again, we're just looking at the front part as being an actually usable piece way out back where the stream is. And, you know, there, there'd be dragons. We're avoiding that area. I don't know about the other properties. But some of the other properties already have residences on them. And it's just sort of an anomaly that it's been rezoned industrial. I think that may have been part of, when the industrial park was built on industrial road, people thought about doing that. There's a huge grade difference between industrial road and these properties. So that has limited the industrial viability of these properties to some extent.
The access to the properties won't be off of Drummond, though? It'll be off of like its own road?
No, it'll be off.
Right, off of Drummond?
It'll be off Drummond. There'll be a small cul-de-sac.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Built in there, I think. But the cul-de-sac will front on Drummond and access Drummond. And I'll be back with the site plan hopefully soon.
Great. Any other questions for Jeff? Yeah. If you don't mind just using the microphone.
Hi, I'm Bruce Fowler with the Sidney H. Geller Trust. And I thank you for giving me a minute to speak. I have a question. We have 152 Drummond Avenue, which is currently leased out to a management company. And if it's rezoned, our question is, is there going to be a grandfather clause so that pre-existing commercial industrial businesses that are in that block can continue as they have in the past?
Yeah, that's always the case. It would be legal non-conforming. So you're representing the Gellers, did you say?
That's correct.
And so they are not objecting or what is the?
No, we have no objection to someone using their property as they seek fit. Because obviously, it doesn't adversely affect the use of our property.
What I'm asking is, do they want their property rezoned or not? They do not want theirs?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so they're included. Or is it included in the seven properties, Dan?
Okay.
Yeah, do we know what lot number that is?
I'm sorry?
Do we know what lot number that is?
Lot three.
He just said 152.
It's 152 Drummond Avenue. I think it's map 74 block three, I think. Or something like that. I'm going to remember.
I can.
Let me see if I can pull up the zoning map.
I have the list of property owners. And I have a map that shows parcel numbers, but I'm not sure. Let's see, which one that is?
I watch the 12-acre lot between the lot he's representing and the.
Springbrook?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So it's parcel number three. I'm not, what's the map number?
Seventy-four, I believe.
Seventy.
Yeah, 743.
Okay, 743.
Yeah, I mean, we can just exclude that from our recommendation.
Yeah, so.
Right.
In the letter, may I?
Yes.
Adam, too. In the letter that I sent to the two property owners who were requesting rezoning, and Mr. Gaimond is here. What am I saying? Lombardi, sorry. John Lombardi is here. He's, go ahead. That's a good idea.
Hi, yeah, John Lombardi. I live at 164 Drummond Avenue, which is lot six on this map. And I'd like to request that it is rezoned to residential B. I lived there for almost 19 years now. I like to keep up with my property. And I'm in need of possibly some additions, a storage shed. And if it's not rezoned, the shed would have to go right next to my house, which I really don't want. And it would prevent me from doing any further additions, which I sort of have plans for in the future. So if you consider that, I'd appreciate it.
So it's a matter of building setback requirements.
Yep.
So in the letter that I sent to the property owners along that strip and then a butters of those properties, I asked people to contact me and let me know whether or not they wanted their properties rezoned. And I only heard from two people. I heard from Mr. Grinnier at 160 Drummond Avenue. And he has a nice house there, but he doesn't know what he wants to do with his property in the future. So he asked for his property to be excluded from the rezoning. And I heard from Dr. Irvin, who is, who owns the Springbrook property. Used to be ice, a nice. They used to cut ice there back in the day. And sell the ice. It's almost all wetland, and so it's not developable. So he said he didn't, it didn't matter to him what it's on, it's not developable. So depending on what you want the map to look like, you might want to go ahead and rezone that to residential B. So I didn't hear from anybody else. Did you, did you hear from the Gaimonds?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to speak for John, but I did, I know him pretty well. I spoke to him the other day, and he didn't have any objection to it. But I mean, it's something, if you want to reach out again and talk to him about.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, me personally looking at the zoning map, I mean, there's already a bunch of residential B over there. So.
On the opposite side of the road?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. So right now, we have confirmation that lot nine and lot six definitely want to be residential B.
If, is yours lot six?
Lot six.
Okay, good. Yes.
Okay.
Six and nine are yes. Springbrook is four. Is an okay with that? So we've got three saying okay and two saying not okay. So I don't know what you want to do about that.
I mean, I have no problem making a motion to say we recommend that lot six and lot nine are rezoned residential B.
Or four, six and nine, Springbrook or not?
Four's fine.
Yeah, we can do four, too.
Okay.
Sure. That's my motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion about the motion? Are you both okay with that? Okay. All those in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll try to get this on to the council agenda as soon as possible, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Did you catch his name, the representative for Mr. Geller?
Bruce Fowler.
Bruce Fowler, thank you. There, I wrote it down. I just forgot.
Item number six. City council is requesting a planning board recommendation concerning revisions to the zoning ordinance to comply with PL Chapter 552, also referred to as LD 337, an act to amend the law governing the regulation of manufactured housing.
I am not going to make a motion to table it this time.
I don't know. It's getting pretty late. Dan, is this what you're here for?
Sure.
You want to explain?
Do you mind if I sit down?
No, not at all. It's okay.
Nobody wants to see this face.
We can see the back of his head, so it's all good. Is that one on or does he have to use the?
Use the other one, Dan.
All right. So back in August, the governor signed into, or since August, it has been the law that municipalities must allow manufactured housing in any areas where single-family housing is allowed. We had to modify our ordinance to comply with that. Where a lot of towns are, it wasn't really a publicized thing. And a lot of towns are currently, we're not the only ones that haven't incorporated it into our ordinance yet. But we are doing that. That's why we're here. Also, some changes to the mobile home park, regulations concerning lot sizes, buffering, open area spaces, locations of mobile home parks, things of that nature. That's the summary, I think. Unless you can think of any other good bullet points, Ann?
Yeah, we did choose to recommend a few changes that weren't part of this state law. And they had to do with work trailers. Is that what you call them? Construction trailers?
Correct, yeah. One of the things in our ordinance that I thought maybe needed, could use a little updating is the use of a mobile home as essentially a job site trailer while a house is under construction. A mobile home is very different from a job site trailer. A mobile home is built to be lived in and be connected to a permanent subsurface wastewater disposal system. A job site trailer does not have that, does not have a kitchen. It's an office, essentially a mobile office. So we, just to clean that up a little, I thought it might be a good idea to just differentiate those two things.
And then there was one other minor point that was in that same section. It was allowing people to live in the basements of houses that were under construction. And we were recommending eliminating that. I don't know how common that is, but you see it out in the countryside. But I don't know if it's done in Waterville.
See it in the country. I've never encountered it in my almost eight years here. No one's asked to do that. Be very hard to finish constructing your house while you're living in the basement, for one. Also, there's egress issues, other life safety issues, air quality issues, things of that nature while living in a basement.
Okay.
So I asked Randy Butler if he could be here. He's zooming in.
Okay.
Because he's the only one who's designed mobile home parks in Waterville in recent history. And the one, the one issue that he had was the amount of open space that we're requiring for mobile homes that, I'm sorry, mobile home parks that are on Waterville Sewerage District lines. And the state is allowing us to require a much larger recreation area if the mobile home park is on the public sewer system than what we currently require for mobile home parks.
Okay.
It's approximately five times as much land. So I think if Randy's there.
Yeah. Sure, Randy?
Yes, I'm here. I don't have my video operating, but hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, to compare the two, your current requirement is 100 square feet per lot. And so if it's a typical lot, your minimum is 5,000 square feet. So if that is the size that's used, then it's about 2% area that's required. In other words, 2% of your total lots, lot size would be dedicated. And that's what we've used on the more recent projects that we've done. If you were to go to this new ordinance, the proportion is about 10%. And just to give you an idea of how that would play out. For example, on this, you know, we're, long-term, it's kind of been delayed. But we've looked at this countryside mobile home park, phase two, which, you know, might be a year or two out or more before we do that. But we've got preliminary plans done. And suppose that's 60 lots. And we're probably going to be something like 6,000 square foot average. So if you do the math on that at 10%, that's about 36,000 square feet of recreation area that would be required. And that amounts to, you know, basically losing six lots. You know, you're losing about 10% of your lots by doing that. As opposed to the current standard, it would be about 6,000 square feet. So you're only really losing essentially one lot to that. So, you know, one of the key things, I guess, to keep in mind is that the purpose of mobile home parks is to provide affordable housing. And the more restrictions that you place on the developer, the less affordable that housing becomes. And obviously, there's some, there's some give and take there. I could see maybe, it might be reasonable perhaps to double the current standard, but certainly not to, not to go five times the current standard.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to suggest that it might be a little bit less confusing to use the same terminology with the two different kinds of mobile home parks. So the state is saying for, if there is a septic system there, you would, you would require what we require now, which is, sorry, now I've lost it. 100 square feet of recreation area for mobile home, per mobile home lot? Yeah, so if we were for the mobile home parks that are, that are on the septic, if we use that same language rather than using a percentage of the total area. So it just avoids doing that calculation. And so you could say, instead of 100 square feet per lot, you could require 400 square feet per lot? Or what Randy's suggesting, less than that?
Okay. Dan, do you have any idea about like in other municipalities? What might?
I don't in other municipalities. I do know in speaking, you know, frequently with the folks that live in, the ones in this municipality, open space is always something that they desire. I understand that affordability is one thing, but quality of life is also a big thing.
Yeah.
I think there is a happy medium to be gained there. Maybe 10% is, just my opinion, from what I'm hearing. 10%, I mean, even cutting it down to 5%, I don't think would be out of the question. Or as Ann said, doubling our current standard.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's time to do something. That's my opinion.
I'm confused. I thought, is this a change to state law that we have to do this? Or is this something that we're adding to clean up a problem?
They're, the state is allowing us to require more open space or recreation area than we were allowed to require before. But they're making a distinction between the parks that are on a septic system and parks that are on the public sewer. And Dan and I discussed this. Why is there such a big difference between those two kinds? The only thing we could guess was that the parks with septic systems have a big leach field that you can walk on or play on.
Yeah, they probably have.
So it's not allowing us to change the ordinance for the private septic, is that right?
That's right. Yeah, so we're leaving that alone. But all of the countryside, they're all on the Waterville Sewerage District. So that's what we would be controlling. So we're really talking, at this point, we're talking about the expansion of countryside mobile home park. How much, this is your chance to decide how much recreation area the park should have going forward.
And, yeah, so a lot has been said, and I'm trying to read through this real quickly. So what are our current requirements for mobile home parks and recreational space?
It's a now 100 square feet of recreation area per mobile home.
Okay. And that's, doesn't matter if it's on public sewer or not?
That's right. But now, going forward, that will be the standard if it's on a septic.
And our minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, so that's 2%. So we currently require 2%.
Yeah, and now with the, if it's on the public sewer, we can require up to 10%.
Got it.
So Randy's asking for lower. And I think Dan and I both agree that 10% is quite a bit. bit. So, but the question is, where in between? Would you want to go in between? But I'm saying, I think it would be a whole lot easier for me to understand if we talk about square feet instead of percentages. And so, Randy was talking about 60 units, because that's what they're proposing for the next phase at Countryside. But for my math abilities, 50 is an easier number to deal with. So, I calculated that if you had a new mobile home park with 50 mobile homes, that the law allows us to require up to 25,000 square feet of recreation area. So, you know, if you think, if you think that 20,000 square feet is enough as opposed to 25, you could say 400 square feet per lot. That would get you to 20,000.
Is there any way we could get some feedback from the residents of a mobile home park?
I'm sure they're going to want every square inch they can get.
The only thing is, it won't affect the ones that...
Already are, yeah.
Yes, but I would think that they would be able to use the recrea, I mean, what would stop them from using the recreation area in the next phase? Because it's all, it has a new name, but essentially, it's all countryside. What, do you remember?
Are there any requirements to what the recreation area is?
No, no.
Because, I mean, I think we determined that the recreation area that exists isn't usable, right? Like, it can't just be, I don't know if we can add something, but like, you say, use the recreation area. They could say, like, a deep culvert.
Yeah.
That they can't build on is the recreation area. So, like, is there a way to?
I think, Randy, you're still...
Yeah, I think that you do have something in your existing ordinance, Ann, that it's going to be a...
It has to be usable.
That I think it's got to be suitable for recreation, for its purpose. You know, it doesn't need to be flat necessarily, doesn't need to, but I think it does state something of that nature in your existing one. I don't know that the new one has anything of that nature. And I, kind of going back to the question you had earlier about what other towns are doing. Scout Higgin, we just did a mobile home park there. They had a pretty loose definition on that one, not really defining whether or not they could prescribe one or not. We ended up on that particular mobile home park having some RV sites, and in their opinion, the RV sites classified as recreational use, so that's the way they did that. We're doing a mobile home park in Oakland right now, and I don't believe they've got a requirement there. So, just to give you some examples of other towns in the area.
Okay, so I didn't, thank you, Randy. I didn't put the entire ordinance into what I gave you. So, the language that would still be here, well, what I was doing was underlining what would be added and striking what would be eliminated, but what stays the same. I didn't want to give you pages and pages and pages of language.
But you struck out the part that says shall be provided and restricted, and talks about the recreation and playground use and being sheltered from the roadway, right? Is that being struck out of it?
Such recreation areas shall be protected from streets and parking areas, and shall have a well-drained surface and good repair. So, it can't be swapped, excuse me, that's the current language, which is going to remain.
That's new, isn't it, Ann? Because it's underlined?
Yeah.
No, it's, well, it's in, maybe I changed the order of it or something.
Okay.
But it's in the existing language, I mean, in the existing ordinance. Hang on a minute. I'll go to the...
Right. And I see it now. It says, served by public sewer, or not served by public sewer, not less than 100 square feet. And then, served by public sewer, the new says 10%. That's what the new proposed languages.
I think what I did was, I don't, I underlined it because I moved it, not because it's new language.
Okay.
It's exactly the same as in the existing ordinance.
So, I've been trying to get some math squared away in my head. 60 units at 100 square feet, that's 6,000 square feet. My house is roughly 7,000 square feet, the yard. And that's not a big lot. It's like, what is that, an eighth of an acre lot type?
Mm-hmm.
And we're talking about 60 families, potentially. Probably not, but it just seems like not much space for the folks that live there. But yet, if we make it too big, they can't afford to live there. So, it seems like we ought to go a little bit higher.
What would the math be? I'm bad at math and numbers, but what would it be if we did 200 square feet per?
It would be 10,000 square feet if you had 50 lots.
Which is...
Yeah, I mean, now we're...
Which is like the size of a residential B lot, right?
You're starting to approach a quarter of an acre.
10,000 square feet was the requirement for the residential B zone, but we recently changed that.
Oh, right. But I'm just conceptual, I think, based off the chicken ordinance, and that's how I figure out things.
The new lots in the residential B zone are 10,000 square feet.
Okay.
I wish I could have chickens, but I can't, and I don't have enough space. So, 200 square feet, that would double it.
No, and it's still pretty small.
Yeah.
It would double it, but it would just be, again, I'm going back to the 50 lots, because that's easier for me. 50 lots at 200 square feet would give you 10,000 square feet, which is essentially one RB lot.
Randy, do you have any comments about this?
I could easily see doubling it. It would be, in my mind, would be reasonable, or a little bit more. Certainly not going up to five times the amount, you know, double or maybe even triple the current size would be realistic. But again, it's about affordability. Just to give an example on affordability, to build these mobile homes, Punky Meadows, we did that original design in 1993. They did it in multiple phases. It wasn't totally built out until about, what, two, three years ago? And on Countryside Mobile Home Park, you've seen how slowly that's gone, and that's, you know, partly just because building is expensive. So, yes, there's a balance. You want quality of life, but there's also making it affordable. So, there's that, I think 200 or 300 square foot is probably reasonable.
Yeah, I had 300 in my mind. That's where I was at, anyway.
300 would be...
That's where I'd like to...
15,000 square feet. Any thoughts?
I'm going to just sort of go back about 15 or 20 minutes, when the chair had a concern or question about, is there a definition for recreational area? What does that mean? I mean, I know what 300 feet is, but what is, what is a recreational area?
So, by ordinance...
Please.
I can read it. I have it up.
Thank you.
Recreation area shall be provided and restricted exclusively to recreational and playground use. Such recreation areas shall be protected from streets and parking areas, and shall have a well-drained surface in good repair.
So, while we're revisiting this, are we allowed to change that wording to create it to be more of a recreational space than just has to be dry and can't be near the road? So, that it's actually...
I don't know. The state law doesn't, doesn't address that. Or, I don't remember reading anything the state law about.
I guess my concern is, is that I don't want to create something that can't be used. I mean, I guess that's my, my point.
Well, if we go with 300 square feet, you know, I'm looking at, that's big enough for a soccer pitch.
Well, the, I'm sorry to interrupt. The statute says, "For mobile home parks served by a public sewer, an additional area for open space, storage, or recreation, as those terms are defined by local ordinances."
So, while we're revisiting it, now would be our chance to change this wording and make it actually a usable recreation area and not?
I mean, right now, the recreation areas aren't very usable. Would you agree?
I would agree.
Yeah.
I just think the term recreational area is vague. I mean, it really is vague.
Well, we certainly haven't defined it in what we have there.
Yeah.
So...
So, I'll, kind of going, well, a little off topic. So, in the current mobile home parks, would we say that, I'm looking at the crossed out language, that they're well-drained surfaces in good repair? And if they're not, we can do something about that, right?
For new developments?
No, for existing developments that would have been under the purview of the language that is currently stricken out in this revision.
It's rewritten right above it.
The old language said that it should be protected from streets and parking areas, and shall have a well-drained surface in good repair.
In good repair.
That's in the existing ordinance that was moved, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess I don't understand the question. I apologize.
If it's not in good repair, can we do something about that?
Is it enforceable?
At an existing mobile home park right now, I'd have to look at the previous statute.
Or would it be helpful to expand on the definition so that it's a little bit clearer as to what that means?
Well, if we change it now, it doesn't affect anything existing currently, but if this is in place currently, we can do something with this, correct?
Yeah, anything that's, that was in place, or that was the rule at the time the place was built, certainly, yeah, we can, we can do something about.
And then, anything going forward, we don't have to change the wording now.
Yeah, we're really not changing the language, we're just moving it.
Right.
Right.
But should we change it?
Right.
So, your question is, I see what your question is, I believe. Based on the current reading of this ordinance, could I go into an existing park and say, "You must address the condition of the surface of your blah, 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 blah?"
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I'd have to, I honestly think I've done this before. I've dug through the, some of these parks are built in the 60s, 70s.
Yeah, sure.
You know, I've dug through the clerk's office to try to find what the ordinance standards were at the time. It's hard to apply current standard. It was built to one standard. I don't know if this would be the place to do it. I think, I think a maintenance ordinance would be the place to do it, like a property maintenance ordinance, maybe.
But let me ask that, maybe I'm missing something. When you say a maintenance, what are they maintaining? I mean, it just, is a recreational area just land, grass?
That's what we're trying to...
Okay.
Green space, yeah, like a park.
So, there's no, no basketball hoop, no, I mean, that's just...
Right now, the statute said, says it can be whatever the local ordinance defines it as.
So, we're going to define it to be whatever we want?
Yeah.
Well, see, and this is what I'm, you know, if I put myself in a developer's shoes, right, and I'm, okay, I'm going to build a mobile home park, and I'm going to provide this recreational area, what's that going to look like? Is it just going to be flat grass? Is it going to be playground with wood chips? Is it going to be a basketball court? Is it going to be a tennis court? What's it going to be? Well, this kind of makes it so it could be anything, as long as it's in good repair.
Or nothing.
Or just a big, open lawn.
Yeah, it just has to be well-drained. It could be a gravel driveway, a parking lot, as long as it's well-drained and it's got a fence between it and the road.
Yep.
There's four instances on the Countryside Phase One that we approved last year. One of the recreation areas was non-conforming a lot. I believe it didn't have 100 footage of frontage, on the street frontage. And another one is next to the...
Maintenance?
Well, it's one next to the maintenance area. Originally, when it was designed in the 1970s, it would have had a pond, and there would have a recreation, maybe a basketball hoop or something to play ball. But the second one that was put in was right next to the under-soil water filter, so it was a very wet area. Really, it's not really, but it wasn't defined. It was just a lot that they really couldn't build on.
So, can we get verbiage in here that more well-defined requirements that need to be met to be considered a recreation area?
Who owns the recreational area? Is it, is it a common area?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
The mobile home, in the mobile home parks, the owners of the homes lease the land. So, it's the owner of the mobile home park who owns the recreation area.
So, let's say that I own a mobile home, and I have the recreational area out there. And who do I go to if I say, "Look, I'd like to have a basketball hoop," or "I'd like to have a couple of sock and nets," or "I'd like to have a small baseball diamond"? Who do we, who do we go for that? I mean, how do we?
Right. Right now, you would go to the park manager.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, if the question is, can we make a definition of what is a recreation area? I think the answer is yes, there's a process to that, as everyone knows. But it's on the table right now. It's pretty vague. I agree. The more, the more detailed, the better, for me, anyway.
If I can chime in, I guess one of the things I would recommend is, if it is going to be a lawn, that it be mowed regularly. I think that may be, I'm not sure if that may be one of the issues at Countryside as it is right now. Remember where they had put those, the two double wides. I'm not sure if anybody knew that that was a recreation area. We didn't know until we dug up some 40, 50-year-old plans, that that's what that was. I think if you're going to change the language or add to the language, you know, one option is, would be a lawn that is mowed regularly, or some other surface that's suitable for playing. Again, give the developer some options or flexibility. You know, if they want to do a basketball court, they might leave a gravel. But if it's going to be lawn, then it at least should be maintained.
I'm just like, trying to find a definition.
The only issue I see with that is, some of the mobile home parks, not in Waterville now, but some of them are restricted to older people. They don't have any children, so I don't know how many 80-year-olds want to play basketball.
No, but there's still recreation for 80-year-olds. There's plenty of 80-year-olds that would play tennis, or that would play racquetball.
Well, shuffleboard for...
Shuffleboard. There's got to be something that would be recreational for them as well, so...
Park benches to sit at and visit.
Yeah, I'm just having a little trouble coming up with the right language right now.
I know. Okay, well, well, think about that for a second, but are there other changes that we have to make? Because I feel like there were a right to the mobile home ordinance.
Yeah, allowing them in certain areas.
In all zones?
In all zones, essentially.
Including, in all zones that require, that we have housing?
That we have housing, correct.
Okay.
We can add some design standards to those to kind of help them blend in some, which we've done, pitched roof.
Right, so this, the version that you have now requires a pitched roof and a foundation frost wall in the residential A, C, and D zones, but not rural residential or residential B, because those already allow mobile homes?
Yep.
And the state allows us to, to require those design features.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about that part? Okay. I tried to buy some time for the whole definition thing, but it didn't work.
It might take a little thought, yeah.
Yeah. Well, maybe we want to focus on the size first.
Okay.
Well, so, if, they're just seeking a recommendation at this point, right? But if, is it the kind of thing where we could, I know we don't really necessarily want to keep kicking it down the road, but at least tonight, we've actually talked about it and have some direction. Is it something that we can actually try to come up with some wording on and revisit, once we can define things a little bit better? Because I feel like that, for myself at least, based on the definition, I think kind of gauges a little bit of the size that would be recommended for said activities or whatnot.
And I agree wholeheartedly. I think it's important to have an area where, whether you're an adult or you have an adult with children, but also, going... But also, going to the quality of life is, there should be a reasonable hour that it shuts down. I mean, I wouldn't want folks out there playing, whatever it is, 11 o'clock, midnight. I mean, and that's another thing I would be concerned about, too, that should be in there, I guess.
Another thing we may want to think of is that this isn't spread out in small sections amongst.
Yeah.
You know, here's a park bench, here's, you know.
Even if it's based on how many lots are in it or something along those lines. If it's 50 lots, then it needs to be X size with X, Y, and Z in it.
Yeah.
Once it hits a bigger size, you know, if there's 100 lots, then it should be larger and have X, Y, and Z in also.
So we're meeting again in two weeks. You could discuss this again in two weeks. If you postpone to a date certain, then I don't have to add it to the legal notice. But if you want to discuss the size a little bit more, we could have a tentative answer about the size and then discuss that again next time if anybody changes their mind.
Well, I think Dave mentioned 300 feet per unit. I don't know, but get the pulse of everybody on that. But does that sound reasonable?
Again, for myself, I just feel like it depends on the verbiage that we're going to put in here. Because I think that sort of vary, could vary, at least, the size that would be required to do whatever it is we're looking to have done.
Okay.
Does anyone know that the size of a soccer field, how many square feet?
I don't.
Google knows.
Yeah.
The soccer fields vary significantly, so.
Well, it depends on what size soccer field you want, right? If you want a, you know, World Cup soccer field versus a.
Little kids.
You know, the one at the North Street playground that they do, yeah.
It, it seems like it would be, it seems like we can't really mandate what someone does with the property. But we could do, we could provide recommendations for, you know, a recreation area that provides support for the community, for example, and list off a bunch of things. But we could do what you said about, you know, some kind of formula for the minimum size for a recreation area. You can't break it up into so many units. So I'd be glad to take an action to try to work on some words to bring next time.
Thank you.
And y'all will have to review it, I hope, beforehand.
Sounds good. Anything else?
Do we need a motion to move it to the next meeting or anything?
I was just going to ask Dan if there's anything else.
Did you want to talk about buffers at all, Randy?
Oh, the buffers, yep.
Yeah, I wasn't, there's not much change really in the buffers. So I, I don't really have too much comment on that. Just looking at the definition or the language here, screening is required within the first 25 feet of the buffer strip, which I think is reasonable. I guess one thing I mentioned to Ann earlier today, I remember on Punky Meadows, we ended up going with a fence and that was acceptable to the neighbor and also acceptable to the board. So I don't know if you want to add some language or have some language in there saying that a fence is suitable, a stockade-type fence.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Isn't that buffer in the state law, Dan?
Yeah, there is a section on buffers.
I mean, the landscaping within the 25 feet. I'm pretty sure we took that right out of the legislation.
Hang on. Buffer size.
Oh, okay. So what we have proposed is a green buffer strip, at least 25 feet in width, up to 50 feet in width, including individual lot setbacks along any mobile home park boundary which abuts land for residential use if the per-acre density of homes within the mobile home park is at least two times greater. But like in the, in the Punky situation, we went for a fence because there wasn't 25 feet of green buffer. Like it was just a line of trees that were dying.
I, I think there was, my recollection is there was the 25 feet, or there were 25 feet, but there was a difference in elevation and so the trees weren't going to, I don't know, something.
Yeah, the last sentence of that section, if you read down there, it says, "Planted with trees or shrubs and maintained to provide a permanent screen." So I guess we could say, you know, "Or a fence if approved by the planning board."
Yeah, or a stockade fence if approved by the board.
Right. I just wouldn't necessarily want to put "or fence."
Yeah, because my concern is if we change it to that "or a fence", it's like the 25 feet of trees that are supposed to be in between property and the mobile home park suddenly get clear cut.
Right.
Which I've already seen happen before. So even though it's not supposed to happen.
Okay, so I'm looking at the state law here. It says municipalities may impose reasonable natural screening requirements within the first 25 feet of the buffer strip. So the state is saying.
I, I think the fence that was put in was, was kind of a one-off and the, there was still the 25-foot natural buffer. It was just the fence was in addition to, I think, right? So I think, I think leaving it the way that it is is fine.
Are we talking about the park that was adjacent to the private property that had this?
The Hart's property.
The Hart's property, yeah.
That was my nightmare for three years.
Yes.
Yeah.
The trees are probably dead again.
Yeah, they may be, but the fence is there. And that was the purpose of the fence.
That was why we, yeah.
And.
But the trees died over and over again because I think they weren't watered. We hit a dry smell or something.
They weren't being maintained.
Yeah.
That wasn't the problem of the current park ownership. That was the previous park ownership. The current ones are the ones that put the fence in.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you all want to vote to postpone to a date certain being February, I'm sorry, April, let's not wait till February. April 22nd, that would save the taxpayers paying for legal notice, so.
Sure, I'll motion to postpone to April 22nd.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Great, thanks, Dan. You don't have to come back if you don't want to.
Oh, he has a great time here.
I bet he does.
He's excited.
We'd have been in trouble, we wouldn't have had Zoom up tonight if it wasn't for Dan.
Oh, yeah.
To save the day.
Okay, item number seven. ProSeal is requesting preliminary and final plan review for construction of 16,000-square-foot commercial storage building on College Avenue. Hey, Steve?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, so this is, this is a submittal for an additional building. We put on their, their lot as it stands right now. They have a well, I'll say well-developed lot. They have a lot that is completely being used right now for their commercial business. They want to be able to extend their season, I guess, by putting this, a four-season storage building that they can put their equipment under so that it's not always outside, as well as, you know, possible expansion in the future for what they're doing now. The lot is, it's fairly flat. It basically pitches from the, from the back of the lot toward College Avenue. It has a, so on the left side of the lot, which is a salt side of the lot, there is a private stormwater system in there with two catch basins. All the water that is captured on that side of the lot goes into those two catch basins and then that just, that drains into the catch basins on the, on College Avenue. And then on the opposite side of the lot, that side of the lot's a little more level and that water surface flow is basically across the gravel to, to the street as well. We're not looking for any infrastructural connections. So there's no water in this building. There's no fire mains, there's no sewer. This is, this is simply a storage building as defined by the code. So I guess that's.
How large is the building, Steve?
So it's 200 by 80.
Okay. Any questions for Steve?
Good, could I ask a question? The city engineer sent you an email message and he copied me, but I didn't see your answer. He was asking whether ProSeal needs the driveway onto Reservoir Street?
Yeah, and so I did, I did answer that and I apologize if I didn't copy you on that email. Yeah, they want access across the whole building because they, Thomas is the father and I guess he has a little bit of a car collection. So, so he, and these are, these are supposed to be pretty nice cars. So he's, he wants to use that side of the garage for his cars. I did talk to Dan, the son, Dan Boyce, and, because that was, based on the city engineer's concerns with Reservoir Street. And what Dan said is because of the condition of that, of the very back end of Reservoir Street, I mean, right now, there's probably foot and a half ditches and holes on where it goes from pavement. So the pavement's already in bad enough shape, but beyond the pavement, where the pavement actually stops and to where our driveway would be, there are puddles that, that would probably be up to my hip. So, and that, so that homeowner has been, there's only one homeowner left on that end. They're already facing that now. Dan said he's going to fix all that and he will pave from, from where the pavement is, ends now, all the way into the, into his driveway and into the building.
That's very generous of him.
Yes, yeah. So, yeah, he, he already made that decision well before the engineer had brought it up. But I thought, I thought that was a.
Just so the board knows, Reservoir Street is presumably, the pavement stops where the city acceptance stops. But there's a house beyond where the city accepted the street and that's.
Oh.
Yeah. We don't allow that to happen anymore by ordinance.
Yeah.
You can't build unless there's an actual street in front of you.
Yeah, those, those are swimming holes. Yeah, those aren't just potholes. I was actually on my way here, I stopped in there again one last time. The car, the car stops at the end of the pavement.
Great. Okay, any other questions?
Oh, we have a findings.
We have findings and facts. Do you have a copy with you?
I do.
Okay. Awesome. Do you, I have, I have it on my computer.
David, would you be willing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
It's a little jarring there, Chad, when I look over and see myself like, like really see myself. Okay, so I'll just kind of go over each number briefly. I'm not going to read every line. And you just say true or false. So the name of the project's ProSeal Storage Building. Name of land owner, Thomas Boyce. And it is at 198 College Avenue. Item number one, the development will not result in undue water or air pollution on or off site.
This is true.
Item number two, there is sufficient water available for the reasonable foreseeable needs of the development.
This is also true.
Mm-hmm. Item number three, will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the capacity of the land to hold water.
This is true.
Item number four, the development will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion.
This is true.
Item number five, I think I said five, but I meant four. Item number five, the development will provide an adequate solid waste disposal.
This is true.
Item number six, the development will not cause an unreasonable burden on the ability of the municipality to dispose of sewage.
This is true.
Item number seven, the development will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area.
I'm going to say this will improve the scenic look in the area. This is true.
Yeah, I would agree. Item number eight, the development is in conformance with zoning.
This is true.
And the developer has the adequate financial and technical capacity.
This is true.
And then the only conditions are ones that were listed in the fire department letter and with the sewage department saying if you need to connect to any storm drainage, you have to have those plans approved. But any questions about those?
I have no questions on those conditions.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed and one abstention.
I'm abstaining because I, my religion shook up, I'm going to go back with.
Understood.
All right.
So the, you've got the.
Do you have plans that you need us to sign, Steve?
I do.
Okay.
David and Tom, thank you.
We can do that and then I'll wave cloture to add the other thing, the airport.
That would be great.
Hanger, okay. All right, we'll just quickly sign those plans and then, thank you.
And if anyone did.